Thank you. Good evening Supervisor Finer, Town Council members and those viewing this meeting. In order to maximize time to hear from the public, I'm going to keep my remarks brief. The public hearing this evening is being held for the purpose of receiving public comment on the final environmental impact statement, or FEIS, which was prepared as part of the continued environmental review process associated with the proposed redevelopment of the former Elmwood Country Club on Dobbs Ferry Road. The New York State Environmental Review Process does not mandate a hearing at this stage, but the Town Board has elected as lead agency to hold one to maximize the opportunity to hear from the public. As was noted, the FEIS is posted on the Town website and is available as a hard copy here at Town Hall and the Greenberg Public Library. The FEIS contains plans, studies, and various information on five FEIS alternatives, two of which are one-family residence subdivisions, and three of which are townhouse-style developments. All vary in terms of total unit count, site layout, open space, parkland, and other aspects as described in detail in the FEIS. I will now share screen, give a brief overview of the alternatives. Okay, what I will start with are-
So are we ready? We're ready with the first-
No, Judith, we're here.
A couple more minutes here. Just a quick overview of the alternatives. So there are two, as I mentioned, one-family residence subdivision layouts in the FEIS. Alternative B is one of them, and it is a 119-unit, one-family subdivision layout. This type of development would have two curb cuts west of the transmission lines along that cut through Dobbs Ferry Road. The first, which I have my cursor here, which would be across from the Chelsea Assisted Living Facility, would be full movement with a left turn pocket in. The second, opposite West Chester View Lane, would have a right turn-in and right turn-out-only style entrance and exit. Third curb cut would be proposed off of Dobbs Ferry Road in proximity to the existing park entrance. This development would include a fee in lieu of parkland of $8,640 per unit, which equates to roughly over $1 million. Another single-family alternative layout as part of the FEIS is known as Alternative H. This alternative has 113 units as opposed to the 119 which we just saw, and also includes an 8.6-acre public park east of the transmission line, and you can see that in highlight in green here. Everything I stated prior with regard to the curb cuts west of the transmission lines are the same in these proposals. And a curb cut here facilitating access to four homes is shown on the screen where my cursor is, and that would be east of the power line. And in this one, the recreation land would be an alternative to a recreation fee. So there would be no recreation fee in this instance. Okay, I'm going to transition now to the three townhouse-style developments, which would all be made viable via rezoning to a planned unit developer. The first of which is Alternative A, and this alternative is proposed as 175 units, and this alternative has a proposal of 14.2 acres of parkland donation. This proposal would have two curb cuts, and again, everything I indicated with the curb cuts for both of those single-family proposals are applicable in this instance. So just to recap, you have full movement driveway where my cursor is here, opposite the assisted living facility, and a right turn-in, right turn-out-only designed driveway opposite West Chester View Lane. This type of development would be designed to be 55-plus, so it would be restricted in terms of age, and from a taxation structure would be taxed as in a condo structure. This development would also have some onsite recreation amenities that would be available to the owners of the townhomes. The second townhouse FEIS alternative is known as Alternative G. It's very similar in look and feel and design as what I just described prior for Alternative A, with the main distinction being that the 175 units in this instance would not have an age restriction, so these would be all-age available units. Again, this alternative would include the 14.2 acres of land donation, and I did fail to mention with the prior alternative, and what I'm going to say for that as well as this, in addition to the 14-acre land donation, the applicant would propose to donate $1.5 million towards programming and development of parkland. That could be funding used for either a modified entrance into this new parkland, which would be annexed and made adjacent to the existing park, or it could be for the development of fields or something of that nature. The last alternative of the FEIS alternatives is known as Alternative I, and this alternative includes a reduction in density from what I just described. It has 159 units as opposed to 175. Everything that I've indicated thus far with regard to the curb cuts west of the transmission line are applicable. This also would include a 14.2-acre parkland donation to the town. This development would include 15 affordable housing units. These are for sale units. And the main difference, and I can cycle back and forth here, is the reduction in units from Alternatives A and G to I is essentially the removal of the interior units and preservation of the open space at this high point of the site. The taxation structure for both I, and I'm sorry if I failed to mention this during G, would be attached, the townhomes would be classified as attached one-family residences and would be taxed as such at 100% valuation. So that, what I just said there, would go for Alternatives G and Alternative I. Just to recap, Alternative A with the 55-plus would not have that taxation structure as it is currently proposed. Okay, stop, share, and I just have a few more remarks, and I will conclude. Following the conclusion of the FEIS comment period, which will be a date set by the Town Board, the Town Board as lead agency will make a series of environmental findings, which will lead to one of the alternatives becoming the preferred alternative, which will be representative of the layout and scale of development at the site. This environmental finding statement will include the Town Board's rationale for its decision. It will include mitigations and such, and conditioning as well. The Town Board's decision will not be made this evening, as it is important for the Town Board to first receive all the comments tonight and those that are ultimately sent in from the public and various interested and involved agencies, so that the comments can properly be contemplated in advance of the Town Board's final determination. For the benefit of the public intending to make comments this evening or within the record period, I believe comments regarding aspects of the proposal or alternatives that you feel are positive or negative are most helpful, along with some reasoning to give the Town Board context to your comment. The public should, however, feel encouraged to make whatever comments it feels are appropriate about the proposed development alternatives and/or responses in the FEIS. Prior to hearing from the public, I believe the applicant may intend to make a few brief comments. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Grebo from Ridgewood Real Estate Partners, the owner of the Elmwood site. Mr. Finer, Board, thank you very much for giving me a minute to open up. Want to thank Tim and Garrett, and I think on the Zoom are the folks from Chasin', or I think they have a new name, but I still call them the folks from Chasin', but thank you very much for all your work so far. When we embarked on this process four and a half years ago, frankly, I didn't think that we'd still be at the point where we were discussing which option we preferred or that everyone would prefer, but I also didn't think we'd have a two-year pandemic at the same time. So it's also nice to be back in a public setting and a public hearing. While I still believe that the original 175-unit active adult proposal is the best overall project, I realize that studying and evaluating all the different alternatives was a necessary and important step for yourselves and the community. Whatever the Board decides over the next month or so, we are ready, willing, and able to move forward on that project. As you can see, myself and my team are here tonight to answer and respond to any questions or comments that you may have. Our goal will be to make sure that each alternative is compared not only on an apples-to-apple basis, but for the benefits that they each provide to the neighborhood and community. When deciding on which alternative you prefer, I ask that you just not think about a particular neighborhood or advisory group's opinion, but what you believe is best for the long-term collective good of your entire community, which can include full tax payments, dozens of acres of open space, affordable housing, additional land for recreation, and if you so choose, one of the alternatives, programming for a park. Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, if that's okay. The first question is, development at Elmwood requires subdividing the land, and under the town code, subdividing land requires a transfer of land, you know, to the town. This is a legal requirement. It's not a gift from the developer. The town has the right to require that the land be transferred for open space purposes. The question I have is, at Elmwood, the land proposed by the applicant abuts huge kind at transmission lines. The town has appraised the land abutting those kind at transmission lines on Dobbs Ferry Road. I believe it is around 75,000 or 95,000 an acre, yet the applicant is saying that it should be 120,000 per acre. If the applicant is valuing the land more, that means the town would get much less land, and I'm wondering if it would make sense or you would object to having an independent appraiser so we could get the proper amount of land that we're entitled to.
I don't have a problem with an independent appraiser. I'd also tell you that our analysis was done pre-pandemic. I think the land is probably worth more money today.
Okay, and the second question that I had is, at last week's planning board hearing, the applicant's counsel delivered, you know, a statement saying he would not give an opinion that taxing townhouses as single-family residences is legal. Is there a possibility that your counsel who's here would give us an opinion that it works legally and that the town can enforce against future owners of, you know, of the townhouses? You know, I'm just wondering if-
So a couple of comments before that question is answered. Number one-
One, I'm not going to answer for David.
You probably should not answer that, and perhaps, and also, there's no obligation, by the way, for, you know, the applicant to comment, but you may want to comment, but, you know, maybe we should-
I think your mic just went off.
Okay, so maybe we might want to hear, you know, from the public first.
I just want to, I'm asking a question. I want to ask the question because I feel that, you know, for me, you know, I want to be certain, you know, one of the big issues that came up is, is this going to be taxed as single-family, or is it going to be taxed, you know, less? And how can we be certain that the townhouses will not seek to convert to condominium ownership in the future, similar to what the landing in Dobbs Ferry, you know, did, which would reduce the taxable revenue, you know, to also, you know, concern that many of the residents who contacted me in the past, you know, few weeks have, is what's to prevent a developer from changing the status of, you know, if they're not able to sell their properties, changing the status to a condominium? That would basically impact us financially. So, you know, I'm wondering if David, if you might be able to just respond to that.
So, Mr. Finer, I think, I could let David speak for himself, but our position is, is that the town needs to be comfortable that the process that we're going through and the way that we're setting up the community with deed restrictions, HOA documents, that's the most we can do. The town is asking us to set up the development as fee simple, which we are willing to do. Beyond that, I think the town needs its own counsel to decide if that structure is legal and enforceable. We believe it is, but we're not going to give an opinion and have that, one, I don't think we can come back around and change. We would need to go through the process again, right? If we were going to, to your second comment about changing, changing from fee simple to condominium, we would have to come before the Board again. And then to the first one, you're going to need to be comfortable as a Board that that process is legal and accurate. Oh, I don't, you can do it.
And again, that's not really on the record because no one, the stenographer can't hear you, so you have to keep your voice up.
I'm going to be very brief because this is a public hearing, and we really want the public to have a chance to comment, but if the supervisor-
David, David, we have a new stenographer, so if you could say your name.
You got it. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. David Steinmetz from the Law Firm of Zarin and Steinmetz, here representing Ridgewood Real Estate Partners. Good to see all of you live and in person. Responding to the supervisor's question, first of all, my client answered quite accurately for me. I agree with everything that Jonathan said. Mr. Supervisor, one thing you asked, you pointed specifically to the landing, and this is a very important distinction. The landing was approved in the village of Dobbs Ferry, as I understand it, as a fee simple project, and there was nothing in their homeowner's declaration or in their deeds that indicated to the buyers in that community that they could not change their form of ownership. Mr. Grebo and Ridgewood have agreed to something very different. At your request, he has agreed voluntarily to memorialize in his HOA declaration and in deeds, and however we, in conjunction with your town attorney, determine it is best for the town, we will cooperate and we will do that. So that's a big difference from the residents of the landing, who did not buy on notice of a request to retain fee simple ownership. These residents would. Beyond that, as Mr. Grebo indicated, I represent Jonathan and Ridgewood. I don't represent the town. I can't give the town a legal opinion. You have very able counsel. You have asked us to do something that's unusual and novel, and it's obviously something that matters to all of you, so I would commend all of you to get comfortable with your request. All I can tell you is, we will do everything that you reasonably ask us to do to ensure that the town gets to be, gets to tax this project the way it intends to do so, if, if you choose an alternative that is a fee simple form of ownership. Remember, you have multiple alternatives in front of you. That's only one of the alternatives. Thank you.
Yes.
Ready for comments?
Yes.
Okay. So Al Florio, Abby Ratner, Josephine Molina, David Ratner, Michael and Melissa Moreno, Carol Sarsonella, and Edward Young, please know that your statements will not be read by me. I've been asked not to read your statements. They will be posted, and if you are listening and viewing this meeting via Zoom, you have the right to have your, you have the right to read your statements. All right, so we're going to begin with Madeline O'Shea, Chairwoman of the Historic and Landmarks Preservation Board. Madeline, are you there? Are you here?
Okay, and as we're waiting for Marilyn, Madeline, you know, I just want to remind everyone, you get five minutes to speak. Obviously, you don't have to take the five minutes. There are other people who want to speak. The Town Board has received numerous comments, so they have a sense of how some people feel about this application, and it's really just to encourage the Town Board, you know, as to what you think is the appropriate alternative. The Town Board is not going to make a decision tonight. They're going to think about some of the comments that you make. It's not a question-and-answer session for the developer, and as I mentioned, the developer really doesn't have to respond, and the Town Board is having this public hearing as a courtesy to the community to get your input. Many of you live in the area, so I just wanted to make those comments, just so everybody understands procedurally how things are going to work. Some, you know, people have made comments as to what they wanted. Some agencies have mentioned what they think the findings or the alternatives should be. Only the Town Board makes that decision, and the Town Board is here to see what many of you think. So with that, Judith, I think we're ready to go.
Is Madeline, has Madeline, Madeline, she's present?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Madeline.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. It has been the understanding of the Historic and Landmarks Preservation Board since the Board's inception that local historic requirements govern all town projects, that the burden to preserve lies with the local historic board first, not the state. The answer to the H and L P B's question in the Elmwood FEIS 3C15 Historic and Cultural Resources depends on SHPO, when in fact, local legislation and policy govern, and that is true with all projects with which H and L P B is involved. Therefore, the Elmwood Connections should submit a complete chain of title going back centuries. After all, Greenberg was part of Phillipsburg Manor. Merely giving the dates of the golf course creation does not give the history of the property and its surrounds. The fact that the land was disturbed to lay out the golf course does not preclude the existence of artifacts when new footings and new foundations may be placed. The policy of the historic board where artifacts are uncovered is to have an historic anthropologist photograph the items in place and catalog them. With the agreement of H and L P B, the developer can then exhibit the found items on-site or give them or sell them to a reputable museum or collector. Unless a burial ground were uncovered, the discovery of artifacts would not prohibit the, the honor system prevails. When notified, H and L P B would give kudos to the developer for finding and preserving pieces of Greenberg history. The requirements of the town's H and L P B are not onerous. Why then does it appear that the Elmwood Connections are attempting to circumvent the requirements? Regeneron had no issue with what H and L P B asks. If Elmwood is permitted to ignore the H and L P B policy, then other large-scale developers will see a precedent and ignore the H and L P conditions as well. On behalf of the Historic and Landmarks Preservation Board, we ask that the Elmwood Connections be required to amend the FEIS, and that they agree to submit a complete chain of title, that they agree to have an historic anthropologist on call and submit the person's name, and that they agree to submit a plan for the disposition of any artifacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Fishman.
Good evening, Mr. Fishman. I had shared with Paul something I'd written, and apparently he read it and read 99% of what I'd written and discussed it with the people up here, so I'll pretty much skip it. I do want to say one thing, though. You've just been told that, and you should look back on the records, that you asked for fee simple. No, that was David's idea to come up with when we were balking, and he came up with the idea of fee simple. That's how it happened, all right? Go back and take a look. Now, with respect to finding out what the individuals who live in the community want, and if you listen to Mrs. Libson, their leader, you'll find out that practically all of the people do not want townhouses. 20, 40, 50 years ago, most of us picked an area, moved into it because it had single-family homes. That's the look we wanted. Paul Finer lives in a townhouse. He once said to me a few years ago, he likes townhouses. That's why he lives there. These people don't want townhouses. It will change the character of their community, all right? That's part one. Introduction to the Comprehensive Plan that our friend Francis spent the better part of eight or nine years working on and was lauded for. And in essence, it says, this is the introduction. It says, "A comprehensive plan is strategic and visionary document that describes a community's desired future for a period of approximately 20 years. It's based on community-derived values, community, people living there, derived values, and guides decision-making and actions affecting the enhancement, growth, and physical development of the community. A comprehensive plan is a policy document that does not in and of itself have the force of law. However, once adopted, which you've done, all policies and municipal laws, including local zoning and regulations, must be consistent with the plan." It goes on in bullet points below it. "It guides decision-making towards the achievement of community goals." Not your goals, not your goals, not your goals where you live, their goals where they live. If I continue and I go on and on and on, in the introductory paragraphs, there's a place here in development. "Support development that complements and preserves the character of existing residential neighborhoods." The character means the way it looks now. Continues to, in process, "encourage community and stakeholder cooperation in planning and decision-making." If you don't take into account seriously, not what each of you wants individually, because you're here to serve the public, they are the public. It's their community. And if you're not going to pay attention to what you wrote, and you do that, then it really means, Francis, that you wasted eight or nine years of work every Friday afternoon with a bunch of people, and it's hypocrisy. You have to follow through. That means you're going to find out what they want, not what you think you would like to have, all right? So that's part one. The only other thing I would say is, and this is important, Gina, I was sitting on the Eshma Community Council Board of Directors when you came to us and you sold yourself to us when you were trying out for this job, basically. "Vote for me, and when I get on that board, I'm going to vote for you," you said, "and everything that you want." Those were your words repeatedly. I'm also part of CGC. You then came to that group, and I was sitting there, and you said virtually the same exact thing. So what it amounts to is that if you wind up voting for something that the majority of the people in that community don't want, you really, basically, are giving up the tenants of what you said about how you would handle the job if it was given to you. And I can tell you that a bunch of people that I know from different communities are very concerned about this situation, how it can turn out, in their areas in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Good comments.
And what they've said is that they would be active in trying to fire you, honestly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fishman. And anybody else who wants to speak? Can you come up and speak to the town clerk? I know she has a list. If you can come up and give your name to the town clerk, but she has an order that she's following.
Yes. Thank you, Tim. I have a request here, but the person did not put their name on it. It says Elmwood Country Club Housing Development. Is that you? Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Please state your name so that the-
Okay, my name is Bharati Sundaram.
Could you spell that? I know there's a stenographer-
I'll come and write it.
Thank you.
Okay. Right now, I'm living in Yonkers, but I'm building a home in Worthington- Okay. Right now, I'm living in Yonkers, but I'm building a home in Worthington Road, and I'm going to move soon because the house is going to close soon. I'm strongly object to have the town home in nearby this, you know, Elmwood, because right now, I'm living in the Dunwoody area in Yonkers. Actually, it was like a single-family home zone, and the city of Yonkers, what happened, you know, they changed the zoning by nearby the Center Park Avenue and changed to townhomes. And it's now, after like fifteen, eighteen years now, it's been, the townhomes are not living as owner, and, you know, they are renting the townhome, and also the owners are keeping as like a secondary home and their investment property. So I like to have this development to be a single-family home, because if you allow these townhomes in here, and it's going to affect all our, you know, single-family home value and our lifestyle, everything's going to be changed. If they develop like one seventy-five townhomes, and what happened, the traffic and it, I'm telling you, because if you develop like a one seventy-five townhomes, and it's going to be five hundred cars, how? Because the townhomes is easily to be rented. You know, you cannot control renting a room or anything in the townhomes, because the people who, you know, come there for, it's a different neighborhood. It's not like a single-family home, because I suffered last twenty, last fifteen years in Yonkers. That's why I like this area. In Greenberg, you know, everything is a single-family home, and it's zoning only for a single-family home. That's why I bought the house, bought the land, and I'm building the home. And Jonathan told that it's dozens of acres, going to be open space and park. And if it is a single-family home, the whole area is going to be a park, and, you know, all the single-family area, they can build only a small area for a house, and, you know, the rest of the areas, they can plant trees, and it's going to be open, and it's going to be parked everywhere. As of now, in my lot, I planted one hundred and thirty-five trees in this one year, because I'm developing this, my lot, as a park. It's going to be same thing if it is a single-family home. If townhomes, then it's not. Then it's going to be crappy, and, you know, it's all our single-family owners are going to affect all those things. I don't know about the tax calculations, but, you know, for the lifestyle, it's going to be crappy if it is townhome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, could you please come forward and just print your name here so that we make sure we get it right with the stenographer? Thank you, sir. Okay. Steve Frazine? All right. Thank you. Did I pronounce your name correctly, Steve?
Perfect. That's unusual. Thank you. Steve Frazine, seventy-seven Parkview Road, Elmwood, New York. My, I live in a development right up against the country club. And my personal opinion is to have one-family zoning, like we have now in all developments surrounding, okay, that parcel of property. I forgot, I'm remiss, and I forgot to thank Paul and the board also for keeping us abreast of all this, because it's been a long process already. And I know I've sent Paul a number of emails already, because the rumors have been flying, and you've been very gracious in handling those emails. I have more of a question, really. I don't know if you can really answer this right now, but a number of us are concerned that, what are we talking as far as pricing for the housing there? There's a couple of scenarios that were given in the options that were given of one-point-two million dollars. If it goes for this much, we could bring in this type of tax revenue. And when we say affordable housing, is it really affordable? You know, what are we talking about? I'm just, I'm just, I know right now, given COVID, real estate has rocketed, but do you have a sense of what we're talking about as far as the price of housing in this development?
Yeah, Mr. Frazine, I do, but we really want you to get your comments out, and then I think that the applicant can address all of the questions at one time, but that's a good point.
All right. Thank you.
Patricia? Patricia De La Coen?
Cowan.
Cowan. Thank you.
Take my mask off to speak. Should I stand over there?
May you goodness be with you.
Paul, board, thank you very much for giving us in the town of Greenberg the opportunity to speak. Welcome to Greenberg. It's a very democratic town. We like to hear what everybody has to say, and we're very lucky, in light of the Ukraine tragedy right now, that we can voice our opinions. Aboud, I happen to live on Country Club Drive, which is directly across the street from where Aboud has realized, I guess, your dream of a beautiful area in the hamlet of Worthington. I am now fifty-two years into my sixty-eight years of life in the town of Greenberg. I planned on retiring in Greenberg. I love it. I love our diversity, and I love everything that we offer here. Yes, we have already lost the idyllic setting of the Elmwood Country Club, which I am directly behind, which now has become pretty much a nature preserve. I feel protected in that there's fencing with barbed wire above that because there's a lot of coyotes out there now, and I have grandchildren. So I am hoping that will be maintained. I am just here to voice my preference for single housing in and without changing our zoning. I realize that we have to increase, and we have already, you already own this land, but townhouses would completely change the whole dynamic of that, of that area. We have private homes that are, as you know, Leon Tally just passed away, and he was down a little country road. We have other people that own property and are building beautiful homes, such as Aboud, and to ruin the landscape, I believe it's ruining a landscape, with townhouses is not something I personally am in favor of, and I know that many of my neighbors are not. So I thank you for listening to me, and good luck in making this decision. You will probably hear from me some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Zinger?
Eric Zinger, one forty-two North Washington Ave. Hartsdale. Hello. Good evening, town board. Great to be back here in person.
Good to see you, Mr. Zinger.
Thank you. I'm going to focus on two aspects of the proposals contained within the F E S that I would like to comment on. The first is about affordable housing. It is a tragedy that of the five proposed options tonight being considered, only one contains any affordable housing options at all. Every single one of them should have some form of affordable housing included. This is one of the biggest residential developments proposed in Greenberg in recent history, and the idea that there is going to be zero affordable housing units is unacceptable. We all know that there is an affordable housing crisis in Westchester. Ken, Gina, when you defeated me in our 2019 Town Council primary, all three of us talked about the importance of affordable housing during our campaigns, and how important it was that we pushed to make as much affordable housing as possible. Ellen, in your email to Democratic district leaders asking for their support in your recent campaign, you wrote that the town must respond aggressively to a growing housing need that is endemic to all of Westchester, not just Greenberg. I know all the members of the town board care about affordable housing, and it's important that we show that with our actions in this proposal. I know this is just an F E I S, and final proposals have been timed to be adjusted and tweaked, so I urge both the representatives of Ridgewood here tonight and the town of Greenberg to make sure that when it's time for final site plans and proposals, that affordable housing be a key component of that. If that means other sacrifices have to be made, then so be it. Proposal A, the developer's preferred option, and some of the other proposals, contain one-point-five million for developing the parkland adjacent to the development. That parkland is to be donated as part of rules requiring open recreation space for new residential developments. We can find money to develop this parkland in other locations if we need. There's always opportunity to find money, but there will not be another opportunity like this to develop a large number of affordable housing units for a long time. I love our town parks. I've been on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for several years, but in a world of limited resources, I think we need to consider what is the best approach. The other aspect I want to focus on tonight, that Paul, that you mentioned earlier, is the proposed tax structure of the development. Options G and Options I are condominium proposals that would have condominiums taxed like single-family homes or fee simple. This is a concession from the developers, because condominiums in New York are taxed at much lower rates than single-family homes because of the way they are assessed, which results in lower assessments. Lower assessments equals lower taxes. I put "concession" in quotes because it is ludicrous to think that the second the ink is dry and development begins, that this wouldn't be immediately challenged in court. In the F E I S, it is stated that there will be a voluntary offering to pay taxes as part of a fee simple structure, which would be established through a deed restriction and/or comparable mechanism. In its post-F E I S responses to Council, Conservation Advisory Council questions, the applicant states the deed will not contain such an offer. Applicant's counsel stated on the March twenty, March second, 2022 Planning Board hearing, that he would not give a legal opinion that the covenant was legal and enforceable. That's because he knows that it isn't. This has already been litigated in New York. I encourage you to reference Norfolk Motel versus Charles Gregonis, which concludes that ordinances cannot be employed by a municipality to exclude condominiums or discriminate against the condominium form of ownership for its use, rather than form of ownership that is the proper concern. This will not work. I'm not saying proposals G and I should be scrapped entirely, but they should only be considered within the expectation of a condominium tax structure. This is a novel legal approach, and the developers may say all of the right things right now until site plan permits and all those things are proposals, but we know, and it's not a secret, that they're not planning on building the units. They don't know who's going to own these units. They don't know what the homeowners association is going to do. This is not enforceable. To proceed down this path with the idea that these will be taxed as fee simple is simply sticking our head in the sand and ignoring reality. Thank you.
Eric, do you have a site? Do you have a site? The case you cited, the case?
Case that I cited was Norfolk Motel versus Charles Gregonis.
Do you have the actual reporter's site?
Yeah.
Do I? I'll send it to you later. One oh five eighty-second, two twenty-four?
If you don't record that, we'll get that. We'll get that.
Forward that to the-
Please forward it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Dixon?
Not on this matter.
Now, Mr. Dixon is here for public comment, Judith, not for the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Okay, and therefore, there are also Nick List saying something. All righty.
Is anybody else here who wishes to speak on this topic, other than Mr. Colton and other people who haven't signed up?
There are several people here.
Okay. Ms. Wilk, did you sign up?
Yes, she did. Yes. Paul Colton, and then I'll call the names of everyone who's signed up. That way, we can discern whether or not there's anyone else who would like to sign up. Paul Colton, Doreen Livson, Bob Bernstein, Carol Wilk, and someone came up and filled out a traffic on Duff's Ferry Road, but I don't have a name. Okay, sir?
I understand.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this public hearing? Please come up and fill out the form. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Feiner, members of the town board. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I sent an email to all of you. I'm sure you've all read it. I'm going to try to get through it now, just so the people in attendance and anyone watching the meeting can hear my opinion. I was involved in the D E I S for this project, and I sat along with a number of other Greenberg residents and worked on giving our input and suggestions on the project and what we felt the potential problems were and what were things that we thought needed to be looked at. I was frankly astonished to see that the F E I S contained materially much different plans than what was defined in the D E I S. We spent many hours formulating thoughts and opinions, and what came back in the F E I S is almost nothing of what was submitted in the D E I S. So beyond that, I really, I have to state this as forcefully as I can. I really believe, and with all the logic I can summon, that if you grant these zoning changes for this parcel, you will clearly set precedent and open the door for all these other large pieces of property that we have in the town, the numerous country clubs, all of which are in various degrees of financial difficulty. There are several day camps and other developable parcels, and you will create a town full of townhouses. People will not want to live in the town of Greenberg of the future if it is a congested, cluttered expanse of townhomes. And I think it's going to be very sad. I don't know that I'll still be here when that happens, you know, possibly not. I'm speaking strictly to the future and what the vision you hold for this town is for the future. You have a comp plan. You obviously have a vision. I don't understand why you would want to change that, that vision that you so carefully crafted and wrote into this comp plan. The, there are other things about this proposal. I don't think that this, the issue of the parkland is so much a red herring. I don't know who wants to come and play paddle tennis underneath, you know, two-hundred-thousand-volt power lines and be comfortable. It's a very uncomfortable situation to put yourself in. I can't imagine people would want to live in homes adjacent to those power lines, and I doubt the developers contemplating on building anything next to those power lines, but for whatever reason. Now, I'll echo what Eric Zinger just said. I can't believe that any of these, quote, "fee simple" plans will not be challenged in court down the road. I think this is ridiculous. It's, it's really a situation that's pretty clear to me. You need single-family homes on this property. You don't need to complicate things with all kinds of loopholes to create more profit for a developer who is going to waltz away from the town of Greenberg the moment the ink is dry on the, on the agreement. He doesn't have any interest in the future of this town. His council has no interest in the future of this town. They are interested in one thing, that's money, and they are trying to maximize, and God bless you, Jonathan, you want to make money? Great, good for you, but I don't want you to make money off the backs of me and my neighbors and our quality of life. And that's all I have to say.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? You know, maybe, maybe, Tim, you know, there's something that we could research. If the town board decides that we're going to disregard the comprehensive plan relating to this property and allow townhouses, does it have any precedential, you know, value impacts if there's other country clubs that go out of business and they want to basically, you know, I mean, if we take an action on this, does it have any impacts on the other country clubs if they go out of business?
Good question, and we'll discuss that in executive session at some point before the board, you know, makes a decision. But good question. Thank you, Mr. Colton.
Thanks for your time.
Doreen Livson?
Good evening, Ms. Livson.
Be too short. Good evening. My name's Doreen Livson. I am president of the Worthington Woodman Civic Association.
Then the microphone hit the top of the-
Then the microphone at the top, from the top.
Oh.
There you go.
Not moving that far. Anyway, I'm Doreen Livson. I'm president of the Worthington Woodlands Civic Association, and I want to thank everyone here that has come to voice their opinion. We have sent many emails to the Town Board because we care. This is a very important development in our neighborhood. We cared about what went on in Frank's Nursery. We accepted because it was as of right to have an assisted living. We knew the requirements for that assisted living fit into our community. That was fine. I now want to speak about three main points: density, traffic, actually, it's four, safety, and setting a precedent. The two requested zone changes for the three multifamily townhouse alternatives will result in a density increase between 34% to 55%, more than the two single-family residence alternatives. The town's comprehensive plan, the Conservation Advisory Council, and the Westchester County's Planning Department do not support increased density in residential areas. On 3/22, the Council of Greenberg Civic Association's representatives voted unanimously to support single-family residents on the Elmwood property. Traffic. This increased density will result in substantial increase in traffic on Dobbs Ferry Road. I'm sorry, 175 is more than 119, and if you don't know that, then you have flunked first-grade math. I was a teacher. I am telling you, 175, whether they're townhouses, whether they're condos, will bring in more traffic than the 119 single-family or the 113. As you know, Dobbs Ferry Road, which is a state road, 100B, only has a single lane each way which accommodates three school districts with buses, private cars and vans, and the Westchester County Bus Number Six Line. In addition, there are entrances and exits to the Springbrook Parkway, Carlson's Nursery, the Chelsea Assisted Living Facility, the Game on Golf Range, Lander's Manor, Westchester View Lane, nine single-family homes. Westchester View Lane has 24 single-family homes and 15 coming in on the process of being built on Drago Way, all across the street from Elmwood. On the corner of Dobbs Ferry Road and Worthington is the Fairview Fire Station with East Runbrook Park on the other side of Elmwood. Also, there's a day school or a day camp on Dobbs Ferry Road, right next to the fire station, which operates all year long. Safety. The number of incidences made by the Fairview Station Number Two in the last three years are as follows: 2019, 1,033; 2020, 1,110; 2021, 1,159. These are, this is the data that I received directly from Fairview Fire Station. That's Number Two. That's right on the corner, coming out and going to help Fairview One and doing mutual aid all over Greenberg. These numbers will increase because of the Elmwood development and could result in more serious outcomes to all Greenberg residents because of traffic jams. Also, the police EMT calls would be affected as well. Setting a precedent. By granting these two zone changes, a precedent will be set which will allow downzoning to any large parcels of land, such as the five remaining golf courses in Greenberg or any large camp properties such as Mohawk or Hillitt. The single-family residence alternatives, 119 or 113, are zoning compliant as of right for this property of 106-plus acres according to the town zoning code. According to the CAC's seeker findings on the FEIS stated 3/4/22, quote, "The current zoning rules existed in the zoning code when the applicant bought the Elmwood property. Amending the zoning code is a legislative act. The Town Board has the unfettered right in its discretion to maintain the town's existing zoning and is under no obligation to approve the application." As they said, you can say no. Good night.
Thank you.
Bob Bernstein?
Good evening, Mr. Bernstein.
Good evening, Mr. Lewis. It's nice to be back. I haven't been here in a couple of years. Several residents in the town have asked me to speak on this matter. I'm speaking tonight as an individual, not on behalf of Edgemont or anything. But the reason, the reason I agreed to speak on this is that there are aspects of these proposals that I do have strong feeling about. I've read the FEIS, and I've read the comments, and in particular, I focused on the comments from the CAC because I think they framed the issue correctly. And basically, as Doreen pointed out, yes, the CAC takes the position that this is a discretionary act. You don't have to grant the request for a zone change. But I want to put a little more meat on that and talk about why you shouldn't change the zoning. And the reason is, stems in large part from the comp plan, which you're supposed to comply with, but you depart from it all the time. All it takes is a majority of you to say that circumstances have changed, and you've changed them. When you do that and have done that, you have created situations that have become extremely controversial in the town. Your land use decisions have not gone over very well. They've resulted in litigation, and regardless of the outcome of litigation, you have a lot of people who are very angry and upset and distrustful of town government. You can avoid that here. You have a situation where the residents who live there, they bought based on zoning that exists, they believed that the zoning would remain in place, they have a right to have that view respected. They have vested ownership interest in having the zoning stay as is. Now, with respect to that, you have the right to say that developer who comes forward with a proposal to do something good might actually benefit, the benefits will outweigh the detriment to the individual homeowners. But bear in mind, those homeowners believe that having something that they don't like in their neighborhood could depress the value of their own homes. So yes, it will give an opportunity for the developer to make a lot of money. In this case, this is probably the only case I can recall in the years I've been looking at this, where the developer asking for the change is not really the developer who's going to develop the property, he's just going to flip it. And that is very different from what you normally have. But be that as it may, a property owner is entitled to ask for this and monetize the result. If he gets the result he gets from the request, yes, what he paid for his property will be worth multiple times that amount if the town legislates the benefits he's seeking. But you do that if the benefits outweigh the detriments, the fees from the project will be, you know, fees that the town would not otherwise get. But what you can do is you can enforce the existing zoning, but I think you should do something else. I think this is an opportunity to do something bold, something that would be good for not just the town of Greenberg, but for the region. Eric spoke about the housing shortage, the need for affordable housing. Here's what you should do. You should, after you can close the hearing on this, introduce legislation tomorrow, if you can, to require that on all residential subdivisions in Greenberg of five units or more, that there be an affordable housing set aside of 20%. You don't allow that. You don't legislate that in Greenberg. You would do it only for multifamily housing and only in certain districts. But you should take it upon yourselves to say, in Greenberg, henceforth, any residential subdivision, single-family homes, should have an affordability set aside for 20% of five units or more. Because if you do that, you will be doing something good for affordable housing, and you will be doing something beneficial for the people who are going to be coming to the town for, say, to support Regeneron. You know, Regeneron's coming in, you're touting all the benefits, but you didn't require that Regeneron put in a nickel to support the affordable housing that its creation is going to increase the demand for, and housing all across the board. But here's an opportunity to do that. And yes, I think it should be applicable throughout unincorporated Greenberg. It should be a model for all areas of this town and all areas outside of Greenberg and in Westchester generally. That's how you get affordable housing, and that's what I suggest you do here. I would support only the proposals that do not change existing zoning that call for single-family residential housing and no downzoning whatsoever. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a follow-up question? If the Town Board would follow your recommendation, and this application has already been submitted, and we would change, you know, the law to require affordable housing for single-family, you know, housing, which, you know, I think is a very constructive and good idea, the question is, would it apply to an application that has already gone through the, you know, part of the review process?
As far as I am aware, the only time vested rights would accrue would be if there is an application as of right for site plan approval that's been filed. All I know of here is that they've made an application for a zone change and have proposed various things that they would like to see happen, but there has not been an application. Now, if they come in tomorrow with an application for site plan approval, then that would have a different situation, but they haven't, and that would require a fair amount of investment to do, to come forward with, and you have the right, the legislative right, to say, no, we're going to require an affordable housing set aside, and it's not punitive as to them because we're going to require it town-wide, and it's a good public policy thing to do. The other point I wanted to make and didn't get a chance to is, I agree that the in-fee sale concept is unenforceable, and do not, do not do this in the expectation that that will work. There's a very good reason why you cannot legislate against a state mandate, nor can you condition people's rights to avoid that state mandate. The state legislature told you how you can levy taxes for luxury condos on the same level as single-family homes through the Homestead Act. You chose not to invoke it. They're not going to allow you to do it a backdoor way, so that's not going to work, and state law allows for the exercise of those rights. That, I want to talk about the site that Eric cited, but there is more recent case law on this. The state is not going to permit the town to try to backdoor that kind of requirement that they forego their state rights, their statutory rights. It can't be applicable to new owners.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Yeah, I just would want to just say that I think that, you know, we do have a requirement of 10% affordability in multifamily dwellings, and I think as a start, we should be consistent and say, we want to have the same, you know, requirements, whatever it is, for single-family or multifamily, all developments, and then I think the board, you know, hopefully we could discuss this at the work session on Tuesday because I think it's a good idea.
You should do it immediately.
I think we should. I agree with you.
Bob, 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 do you have sites? Do you have case law that you could send us?
I can. I don't have it with me tonight.
No, not now, but I mean, you know, when you get back to your office.
On that issue, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Carol Wilk? Carol, please spell your last name for the sonographer.
Oh, Wilk, W-I-E-L-K. Can you hear this?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Nice to see you all. Welcome, Eleanor, although I know you've been here for a while.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Wilk, president of the Seeker Homes Civic Association. Seeker Homes is pleased to support its sister organization, the Worthington Woodlands Civic Association, of which Doreen is the eminent president, as well as its constituent organization, the Council of Greenberg Civic Associations, as they both seek to protect their respective residential communities from a proposed development which would undermine the concept of a single-family housing and burden the unincorporated taxpayer with additional tax levy, which may well result from a proposed unproven and unknown legal fate, and that's a general statement you've obviously heard tonight, the more specifics regarding that. Even recently, before the town's planning board, the applicant's own attorney, as people have pointed out, refused to support the legal underpinnings of a financing plan upon which their whole application relies, and tonight's comments from the developer and his lawyer notwithstanding. It appears, at least from my eye, that the Town Board fears or wishes to ward off a potential lawsuit from the applicant whose legal representatives issued forth a February 9, 2022, letter to the town complaining about all sorts of delay, bad faith, and citing legal decisions meant to subdue any town efforts to follow its own comprehensive plan and listen to its constituents. The fact of the matter is that the applicant, who will not even be the developer, but plans to flip the property, as well you've heard over and over again tonight, could have begun the building process some years ago by conforming to the town's comprehensive plan to build 119 single-family residences as of right. Instead, the applicant wanted to, a bigger bang for his buck, and decided to go for broke and push for multifamily housing, which would require zoning changes and which would partly eviscerate the town's highly-regarded comprehensive plan. The town, for its part, failed when it accepted an FEIS, which was so drastically different from the DEIS, which was originally submitted, and which had the benefit of the required involvement of the appropriate agencies and community. Now, the community and the town are faced with five different alternatives to rush through the review process in order not to invite additional wrath of a profit-seeking applicant. This is no way, this is no way to treat a community or its planning or zoning authorities. I ask the Town Board to listen to the community tonight, which you apparently have, and to its own highly-regarded Conservation Advisory Council, both of whom have prepared thoroughly researched arguments of why the Town Board should conform to its own policy and procedures and maintain single-family housing at the Elmwood Preserve and seek, as you may, to incorporate adequate, not token, but adequate affordable housing in this and certainly in all developments going forward. And I'm really very pleased to hear over and over again the many people who came up to advocate for affordable housing. That's an enlightened community, and that's a good community. And as you may, you may well be advised, you can start this process with the masterly comments and all of which you received from the town's Conservation Advisory Council on March 4, 2022. It's a beautiful 16-page summary which addresses all the key issues, and I hope you all give it a really good read. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alan Stern?
My name is Alan Stern, and I lived in Greenberg for 47 years. I came from the Bronx. Me and my wife came from the Bronx. Our children went to Greenberg schools. I'd like to say that Doreen stated most of my objections. I don't want to repeat it. The only thing that I want to make sure about is the traffic congestion that will happen if they have 100 new homes on a two-lane road, okay? Now, when you go to work at 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning, it takes 15 or 20 minutes to get by. Now, if you have additional traffic, it may take a half hour, and then coming home, it'll take a half hour. So that's my opinion, that I reject all the... that I reject all their options.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I just clarify? Excuse me, excuse me. Can I just clarify?
Mr. Stern.
You said you lived here.
For 47 years.
Do you still live here?
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry Byrne. Actually, I apologize, Mr. Byrne. You wrote Gerard Byrne there, so.
I did that for the public record. It's my birth name. Gerard Byrne, G-E-R-A-R-D, Byrne, B-Y-R-N-E. Good evening, everybody. And I would like to just share with the board that the Parks and Recreation Department and the Parks Advisory Board were interested agency to this project. I heard a lot of wonderful comments tonight from the community. Just want to say, I grew up off Dobbs Ferry Road, moved to the community in 1958, went to college in '74, came back in '86. This area and community is very dear to me. Also, when it was a country club, I caddied at that site for five years. I know almost every inch of that as a caddy and also when I was able to play golf, when my ball sprayed all over that golf course. But as far as tonight, the Park and Rec Advisory Board had a presentation from Garrett Duquesne, Commissioner of Community Development and Planning. And they got to see and hear of the five alternatives and also have some of our answers questions. They're not ready to take a position on this. But before the record is closed to the public, they would like to make a recommendation, along with me as a professional with the department. As you know, East Rumbrook Park is a 42-acre parkland which borders this proposed project. So it's very, very important to us. I can say I think it's option B, which is for the 119 homes and to give money in lieu of land, which state law requires that you're supposed to give land. And then if we don't see it suitable, that we can have the option of taking money in lieu of. Is that we, I know personally I would object to that and would ask the board to consider one of the other four. So hopefully, before the record's closed, we will come back with a recommendation from the advisory board. And then I will, as a Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, thank you for hearing me.
There are no further requests for the speak on this public hearing.
Did the applicant want to respond to any questions or no?
Is there any?
Can I?
If you could raise your hand.
Anyone on Zoom?
Bishop Preston would like to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, town board. Good to see all of you. Great to be back in.
Please introduce yourself for the stenographer.
Bishop Wilbert Preston, W-I-L-B-E-R-T-P-E-R-S-T-O-N. I was not going to say anything on this matter. But after Mr. Zinger had mentioned some things that is dear to my heart and then I think the gentleman from the attorney that came up, sometime I forget names, faces I keep up with. I'm really, really concerned about affordable housing. As most of you know, I am the chair of the Greenberg Housing Authority, and we're in the process now of redeveloping all of our federal housing portfolio. And it was astonishing to me after we started five scattered sites, we call them, we found that there are an inordinate number of people that are paying market rent for public housing. And the reason, after we found that out, we started interviewing people to find out, why are you still living in public housing paying more than what a house payment would be? And it was surprising to know that one of the two factors is, the first one I liked real well because they said, well, living in public housing, we like the services. All we've got to do is call for a light bulb, call for the grass to be cut, call for somebody to come do A, B, C, D. The second thing is, there is an area of income that housing, that affordable housing does not meet. And moving from public housing or low-income housing, and there is no area that can be purchased, no housing that can be purchased, what we would call maybe workforce housing or something along that area. We jump from low-income housing to something like being built, million-dollar housing. What's going to happen to those people that can't afford that? They have to move upstate, move down south, different things. As a pastor, I've lost a great number of members who retired and could not afford to stay here after working here 30, 35 years. So the concept of affordable housing is really, really dear to me. I've been fighting. I've been here until 12 o'clock at night fighting for affordable housing. And I was really elated when, I think, is it Hal Simon? Is that your name?
No.
Bob Bernstein.
Bob Bernstein, thank you. Mr. Bernstein mentioned that. And this is something I mentioned to Paul. I mentioned it to some of the board members that, why are we stuck on 10% set aside for these developments when we can get more and we need more? And I think it's disingenuous for the board members, Mr. Feiner or anyone else, to say that we want more affordable housing, but you don't put a mechanism in place to make that happen. And by offering some legislation that will do what Mr. Bernstein said, I am 110% behind that because 10% of set asides of new development is not touching the need. Let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. On yesterday, the Greenberg Housing Authority opened up the application for low-income housing and affordable housing. Opened at 9 o'clock. By 11:34, we had 2,001 applicants. I repeat that. We had 2,001 applicants in two hours and a half. The porter shut down because people were applying at such a rate that the porter could not handle it. We had to go back with the programmer and reprogram something, whatever those technical people do, so that people could be put on waiting, call waiting, until they could get someone to get a position to electronically apply. Affordable housing is desperately, let me say that again, desperately needed in this area. And I don't know why we are stuck on 10%. Some of the responses that I've gotten is that other towns have 10%. My response to that is, so what? Why can't we set a precedence? At least 20%. I would rather have 25% because affordable housing, people that have affordable housing needs, their needs are no more, less urgent than the people that are going to afford million-dollar houses.
Right. Thank you. So is anybody else who hasn't spoken already who wishes to speak? No? So Paul, as you know, we-
We do attend.
There are some speakers on Zoom that have just indicated that they'd like to speak.
There are six, Garrett.
I'm sorry?
You said there are six?
Two.
Oh, two. Okay. Cliff Abrams?
Okay, so Cliff Abrams. Cliff, on you. Speak, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I am on the Greenberg Consistental Racism Housing Committee. And before I became on that over a year and a half ago, I came to Garrett. I said to Gina, I said, how do we know that the 10% set aside, how do we know that they are following the rules? And Garrett and Gina were supposed to get back in touch with me on that. And still to this day, I don't know who follow up to make sure that the people who are supposed to give 10% is giving 10%. Even though I feel it should be, as Bishop was talking about, should be at least 20.
Cliff, can you speak just a little bit louder? Because I can barely hear you. We have a stenographer.
Would you be able to hear me? Can you hear me now better?
We hear, yeah, it's much better, as loud as you can.
Okay. Would you be able to hear what I said earlier?
No, we did, but a little bit louder would be better.
Okay. So, you know, I want to know, like, this board here, you know, because y'all saying one thing about how y'all are about affordable housing, because I was hearing Eric and other people saying that, how y'all was talking about it. But now, I want y'all to show. I want to know how and who follow up to make sure the 10% is being followed. That's important right there. And I asked that question over two years ago and never got a answer. So maybe Gina or maybe Ken, because Ken likes saying a lot of stuff, maybe they can speak on who followed through. Or Mr. Feiner, maybe you. Who followed through to make sure that the 10% is being followed? And how do the residents know that y'all following through on that? Francis always find out. He's always on his laptop. Maybe he can tell. I'll wait till my public comment comes to speak on what I really want to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle Brown.
Hi, good evening. I agree with that do have townhomes in there. I agree that there should be a set aside. And I agree that there needs to be a distinction between low-income and affordable housing, as Mr. Preston said, workforce.
You hit the new button.
Coming in, hang up these properties, including Parkway Homes and Parkway Gardens. There's no protection as in historical landmarks. And then we come here, right? And you've got all this rhetoric about, you know, homeowners are going to be at risk. You know, it is a problem with traffic. There's also property value. There's also a problem. Community. You don't take a residential and create townhomes in the middle of it. It's just the dynamic whole community. And especially when someone is buying a property on the notion that it's always going to be zoned that way. So there is other land in Greenberg that the town can look at making affordable or low-income. The town can invest in its own community. The town can take the resources they're giving to other people and put it back in the community and create co-op situations for people so they can own something. You know, or low-income, affordable townhouses where people can own something. But again, this community is not the only community at risk. Parkway Homes and Parkway Gardens is at risk. Do not think for a minute it is not. And whatever they can do here, they are going to set a precedent and are going to come over there. So I really hope you really think about that. People on that board that own their home, you ask yourself, would you want to have that? And if you're honest with yourself, you're also a resident of Greenberg. Yes, you are the board, the politics, but you also live there. So again, you should look at what happens between low income and affordable income and look at ways that you can go to your government above you, get money and invest in your community for people that work in that community, that want to live in that community, for people that have been there for 35 and 40 years that want to retire in that community and for people that want to live in the community they first bought into. Because this is just unreasonable. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other speakers?
I don't have any other requests. Do you, Garrett?
No.
Okay. So we need a motion to close the public hearing and leave the record open until April 11, which I think is on consent with the applicant who's consented to that.
It's April 8, which is 30 days from today.
Okay.
Or 30 days, leaving the record open. And that gives enough time for the planning board to give their comments and anybody else and anybody else who wishes to provide comments to the board.
And those comments would be delivered in the same manner to the town clerk or to the planning commissioner for the record?
Garrett, how do you want that to be handled?
Yes. Good question. I recommend that comments by email come into planning@greenbergny.com.
And could we also put on, you know, the work session agenda for Tuesday, Mr. Bernstein's suggestion that set aside for affordable housing be required for single-family, you know, homes that are currently not covered by our existing set aside?
Okay.
Maybe we could put that on for Tuesday.
Okay. Did you make that motion? And we're waiting for a second?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next. We have the public comment portion of the meeting.
Paul, you didn't close the hearing. You just made a motion-
Oh, okay.
-that Mr. Bernstein's recommendation be added to the agenda for Tuesday.
Yeah, that will just be put on the agenda for Tuesday.
I don't think that was a motion. I think it was just-
You don't need a motion for that.
That wasn't a motion. The motion was really to close the public hearing. But that was a comment that Paul made. And we did get a second from Ellen.
So we need a second to close the hearing?
Ellen seconded.
Yes.
Oh, Ken?